Bonnie, can you hear us?
Yes, I am here and ready.
All right, great. Welcome, everyone, to our Planning Commission meeting this evening. We will start with a prayer by Commissioner Anderson and then Commissioner Davis will lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful we can be here, gathered together as residents of Washington City. We're grateful for the opportunity to represent our city and participate in local government. Please help us to have clear minds and be able to think clearly about the issues, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
All right, I'll start off by saying that I'm here filling in for our normal chair, which is Commissioner Bullock, who he actually had a horse riding accident this past week, and so he's out. He's actually doing well and improving, but unable to attend tonight, and maybe he's tuned in, I'm not sure. So guaranteed there'll be some mistakes, but be patient with us as we go through the agenda. We'll start off by looking for a motion to approve our agenda for tonight.
Commissioner Tupow, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Davis seconds the motion.
First by Commissioner Tupow, second by Commissioner Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Look for a motion to approve our minutes.
Commissioner Davis, I may move that we approve the minutes of the June 18th meeting.
Commissioner Tupow, I second that.
First by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Tupow. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any declarations of abstentitions?
Abstent.
Conflicts. Okay. All right, our first item, 4A, it's a public hearing in consideration to approve conditional use permit C-25-06 for a church to be located at 3265 South, 300 East on the applicant of Sky Engineering. Turn the time over to Eldon for...
Thank you, Commissioners. This is the site we're looking at here, approximately 3290 South, 300 East. I'll just zoom into the site plan here while we go over the specifics. Churches are allowed in residential areas throughout the, through the approval of a conditional use permit. The property is currently zoned R115. Also, for the Planning Commissioner's information, the City Council recently approved a height waiver for the steeple portion of the church to a maximum height of 69 feet. The new proposed church site is approximately 3.94 acres, and the building is roughly 18,300 square feet, providing 252 parking stalls. Parking is adequate for the proposal. The exterior material for the church includes brick and stucco, as shown in the exhibits, and also a generous landscaping plan surrounding the project. Staff has reviewed the requested proposal and finds it to be in harmony with the surrounding and existing developments. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve C-25-06, allowing for a new church to be located at approximately 3290 South and 300 East, based on the findings and conditions as stated in staff report. I'll pull up the landscape plan. You can see that in the building elevations as well. You can see stucco and brick. Very similar to a lot of their other buildings. That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Eldon? This is a public hearing, so I'll open for comments from anyone in the audience that would like to address this item. It doesn't look like there are any, so I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, either items of discussion or look for a motion.
Looks pretty standard to me. Does anyone have anything? Okay. I'll make a motion. I recommend approval onto City Council of G2503 to amend the general plan land use map located at approximately 925 South, 1900 East from estate to proposed industrial general plan land use designation.
It's actually C25-06.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one. Excuse me. I make a motion to recommend approval with the conditions in staff report. Is this going to City Council? It doesn't say it on the, okay. C-25-06, request for conditional use permit for a new church building located at approximately 3290 South, 300 East.
Commissioner Davis seconds the motion.
Right, first by Commissioner Tupow, second by Commissioner Davis. Individual voting, Anderson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Tupow?
Aye.
And I am Commissioner Mitchell, an aye as well. All right, our second item on the agenda is 4B, public hearing to, for consideration or recommendation to City Council, Commisional Use Permit C-25-03 for Star Nursery located at 1475 East, George Washington Boulevard applicant Damon Hardy. Turn the time over to Eldon for...
You previously stated the address there. This is the overview of that site. Kind of get your bearings there where we're looking at the east end of George Washington Boulevard. And I'll pull up the specific site plan here. So on top of the screen is George Washington Boulevard, and to the south is their store. Commercial development adjacent to George Washington Boulevard is required to obtain conditional use permit approval. As shown in the exhibit, the entire site is approximately 14.1 acres. The site plan shows three buildings, one being Star Nursery and the other being two quick serve restaurants. These quick serve buildings are not part of this approval as the building renderings are not available at this time. However, the site is being situated to accommodate these future uses and making the needed parking accommodations at this time. Both of these outbuildings will be required to obtain conditional use permit approval. The Star Nursery Retail Center, the covered portion is approximately 23,387 square feet. There is a 33,600 square foot shade structure to the rear of the building. And approximately 152,000 square feet of outdoor plant area. To the east of the covered building is the retail delivery area, which is 54,200 square feet, and to the west is the rock yard area covering 116,350 square feet. The proposed buildings meet the minimum setbacks and height requirements for this zone. Proposal includes a landscape plan, which is aesthetically pleasing. The applicant has incorporated 20 internal landscape boxes in the parking lot to break up the parking area along with the required perimeter landscaping and live growth that is adjacent to the eight-foot privacy wall, excluding the retail deliveries and rock yard areas. Required parking for the entire site, including the quick serve buildings, are 253 stalls, and the applicant is providing 322. This is in excess of 69 spaces. As shown on the exhibit, the applicant is asking to build an eight-foot tall split-faced CME wall along the exterior boundary line of the rock yard and the outdoor plant and retail delivery areas. Staff supports this request, as shown in the exhibit, that will best exclude these areas. And the exterior material for the building include brick, stucco, hardy board, metal siding, rough sawn timber, and a metal roof. The parcel is zoned C3. Surrounding zoning is C1 and open space to the north, open space to the east and south, and PUDC to the west. Staff has reviewed the proposal and finds that it meets the standards outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends, Planning Commission, recommend approval of C-25-03, allowing for the Star Nursery site, and that's based on the findings and conditions stated in the staff report, and this will go on to City Council for approval.
All right, thank.
That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. I can thumb through these exhibits here. We can pull up the elevations. Got the landscaping plan here.
Thank you, Eldon.
Eldon, this is Commissioner Anderson. So we went over this once before and trying to recall what issues were, and if, I mean, we haven't seen it in quite a while, but I know there was, there were issues with the architectural elevations. They, do you know what was revised or what's different from last night? It's been like almost a year since we saw us. I don't quite remember.
It has been quite some time. Since then, regarding the elevations, you know, Will and Bill, their team has kind of taken a back end. We're currently not engaged with them, and those last comments that were made were incorporated into this plan, and we're satisfied with where we're at today.
So what exactly was incorporated? In everything we had?
I don't have those specific notes in front of me.
Yes, my question is, it looks like the building's the exact same. The only thing that looks different is adding the landscape boxes in the parking lot. That looks like about the only change that I can see.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion about site layout and Star Nursery, knowing how their site is going to flow and work best.
Guess I'll ask the architect here.
So Derek Wiggins, architect with Reflect Architecture, I could maybe help with a little bit of what changed. It wasn't so much that what changed, it was more identifying the materials, the finishes and the colors. That was the big request that we got last go around, and so we've now incorporated all those elements into here, including some of the textures, especially those color requests.
So I do have a question from an architectural standpoint. What exactly is going on with the roof here? Where you got the front gable over the entry and... What's going on there? It's kind of unusual.
Yeah, sure. So from kind of a construction standpoint, it's really two buildings in a lot of ways. It's a metal building, and then we've incorporated a framed structure out front in order to make it, you know, feel a little bit more residential and fit in with the neighborhood. We kind of wanted to hide the big metal building as much as we could.
That was the gist of our previous comments, but I'm looking at this and it looks to me like the main roof line needs to be a steeper pitch. I mean, you've got that gable over the entry that's more than double the height of the main roof with no backside to it.
Which part are you talking about? Sorry?
Big gable over the entry right there.
Yeah.
It's double the height of the whole building, and so there's no backside to it, and it's just, you basically, just like you said, you got a metal building with somewhat of a roof tacked on to the front of it. It looks like, I mean, if you're trying to make it look good, you need to make that main roof line be a steeper pitch so it hides the, where the metal roof, where the metal building pokes out from behind it. Right there, and even more to kind of line up with that front gable. I mean, that's kind of the intention of trying to do that, but it just, it needs a little, a little help to get there.
I mean, visually, we've ran it both ways, and it definitely looked better this way. And so, just because when we had that higher pitch up, it didn't have that kind of softened metal building roof line. That really helped soften up the point from that main entry. That was the big thing that I liked about this current layout that we have, but we have ran it both ways. I mean, the owners are here, at least the owner's rep, and he can maybe speak a little bit to if he'd be opposed or in favor of making that change.
Yeah, that's my big, I mean, we talked about this before, and I am happy with the, you know, the planner boxes and so forth and landscaping, which is updated. And it looks like you've identified brick on the water table and so forth from last time, but, I mean, that roof line was an issue before, and it's still the same that it was. So that's... From an aesthetic perspective, that was kind of a big point with this before as we were trying to make it look not like a metal building with a roof tacked on.
Sure. Are there any other questions?
I don't have any.
I mean, I do, I do feel like, yeah, somewhere thoughts is Commissioner Anderson, just looking from the front and seeing in the back the metal building, and then even out on the wings, you're seeing the edge of the metal building that extends past the gable at the end.
Just architecturally, I mean, if the, if the main roof line is, you know, I mean, it looks like it's maybe a, I don't know, a three or four 12 pitch. If, I mean, even just a little bit, a little bit steeper, it's going to hide where that metal building pokes up right in the middle of the building. I mean, yeah, just a simple little increase of pitch is going to make that look a lot, a lot nicer. Like Eldon said, I guess, I don't know how much we're interacting with Will and Bill right now on the architectural stuff, but I mean, when we first looked at this, the architectural was like a big, big deal on this. So I'm wondering, you know, is it still a big deal or not?
Can you answer that, Eldon? Was the architectural group involved in reviewing this one?
Up to that last meeting, we were, yes, and like Derek said, those asks were incorporated into this plan, and then that's when Will and Bill were no longer engaged with the project.
This will be open for public comment? Should I turn that, open up the public comment and then discuss later? All right, this is, I'll open it up for the, for the public. Anyone that has any comments regarding this project can come forward now. Doesn't look like we have any public comment, so I'll close the public hearing. Oh, here we go. Are you the owner?
Commissioners, I'm representing the owner.
Okay.
First of all, I'm grateful to be here tonight, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Damon Hardy, for the record, H-A-R-D-Y. I work for Star Nursery, and I'm representing the owner, Mr. Craig Q., who's the founder and owner of Star Nursery. In this process, this design process, this is a building we've never used before. Of all of our standard buildings in Las Vegas, Nevada, Arizona, and obviously Utah stores, we haven't built any new stores here, but our look, we've been completely different from what we've accustomed to, and basically being because we talked to the mayor, and the mayor, Chris Staley, and he said, basically, we want to make sure we meet the neighborhood requirements and want to make sure we're aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. And so we basically left up to the mayor and his decisions and our architects as to how we want this thing, building to look. So we've done a lot of design changes to this, and as Mr. Derek Wiggins was mentioning, that slope, it definitely is a softer slope. Before, we had it to pitch a little bit higher, and with a board and baton that we had on there, we thought it was very aesthetically pleasing, especially with the exposed beams and things. So again, this is not our normal look for a Star Nursery that we've had in Las Vegas, or in Nevada for that matter, but we've really excited about this look, and for the neighborhood, I think it'll fit very nicely in the community. So I hope we can, we just want to make sure we're pleasing to all the people that are surrounding us for this project. So, thank you.
Do you, this is Commissioner Mitchell, do you feel like there is something that could be done? I want to just point on the map for the picture here on, to eliminate the exposure of the building behind.
You've got these wings up here to poke out, and right here, you've got like two buildings that are conflicting with each other, rather than making them blend together.
We just felt it was more of a natural, natural slope to ease some of those hard lines there, based on some comments that we received. So we're here to do whatever we can to make sure it's pleasing to everybody. That was our promise with the owners. We'll definitely consider your comments for sure, 100%.
Commissioner Anderson, the increase in the pitch will eliminate the...
That eliminates here, but you still have the wings.
I mean, you can continue that roof line out, or you can leave it and make it kind of look like a dormer, which is sort of how they've made it look, kind of like a shed dormer. But, I mean, if they wanted to, if you wanted to get rid of those wings, you just extend the main roof line out, but either way, it just, it needs to look like one building, you're right, not, not like a metal building being covered up, that's all. So, I just, I like the landscaping, I like what you've done there, I just, and I like the colors and so forth, it's fine. I just think the roof needs some work.
Just out of curiosity, did your metal building designer come up with this design, or was this kind of a...
Architect, basically, it was a mutual effort between engineer, architect, as well as the owner, and some of the comments from the mayor and his council. So, yeah, we saw some buildings down the, down the way, off of, just down a couple blocks away, and that's, that was their kind of look, the black and the white. So we wanted to adhere that to the neighborhood so we didn't stand out with our typical tan and, you know, curved arches and things. So that was, like I said, completely different. But we based it, this look on a lot of the buildings that are currently, being planned currently and just for other commercial centers. So that's kind of how we came to this, the look on this property.
Commissioner Davis, so just being frank with you, are you going to take it back? And will you, will you address this?
Absolutely, absolutely. We have no problem. We just want to make sure, like again, we present a perfect product that everybody's happy with.
So the process tonight is... Recommend either direction, but it's, the next step is at the City Council, and so I think here is to get public comment and Planning Commissioner comment, and then the applicant can integrate what they want, and then go talk with the City Council and get more feedback there, and then move forward.
Thank you for your comments.
Luckily, I'm not a designer, but I think it looks, that's the best looking nursery I've seen.
Thank you. We think so. This will be our signature story, one of our biggest, so we're excited to be able to take another chance and expand in Utah, so in Southern Utah. So thank you.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I'll, I'm going to make a motion to recommend denial of C-2503, but I want to clarify, I like the project, I like the landscape and the layout, everything, just enough for the fact that I think roof line needs to be done a little bit better. That's, that's the only, and I think that, that you should at least have an alternate so the City Council can see a couple of different, you know, at least two different versions. I don't have anything against the rest of the project or anything like that.
Commissioner Davis seconds the motion.
All right, we have a motion by President, or Commissioner Anderson, a second by Commissioner Davis. Individual voting, Anderson?
Aye.
Davis? Tupow?
Nay.
Mitchell, and I am an aye as well. Okay.
Just for clarification, that will go to City Council next week, even though that just recommendation of denial.
And specifically, I think we've covered that well. Just, I feel like there could be a little bit more work done on that, on the design, yeah, just to make it look a little more appealing. All right, item 4C, public hearing for consideration and recommendation to City Council, general plan amendment G-25-03, from estate to industrial, located at 925 South, 1900 East. The applicant is Curtis Rogers and American Land Consultant, and I turn time over to Eldon for staff comment.
Well, the area of this one is tucked back behind. I zoomed out and highlighted where this land is located. This parcel covers approximately 6.41 acres. The general plan for this parcel is split, with industrial being on the west end and estate being on the east. I'll pull that up so you can visualize it. The applicant is proposing to change the east end of the property, which is 2.7 acres from estate to industrial, so that the entire parcel will have the same general plan of industrial. industrial. Surrounding general, general plan designation is estate to the north, east and south, and industrial to the west. Staff has reviewed the requested change and is comfortable with the proposal as access to the area is off 1900 East and through industrial uses. Staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval for G dash 23, G dash 25 dash 03, amending the general plan land use map from the current estate residential to the proposed industrial designation. And this will go on to city council for approval. I'll pull up this other exhibit if this helps. You can see that parcel's split in half, and they're wanting to match those zonings there. That concludes staff report. Are there any questions you may have?
All right, thank you, Eldon. Anyone have any questions for Eldon?
I was highlighting the incorrect parcel. This is the correct parcel, the smaller one. You can see there it's split in half. Directly to the south, there's a large easement separating the two, several utilities running through that. The only access is through 1900 East, which is all industrial uses as well.
Part of the, is part of the objective here to consolidate, there are other three parcels into this as well, so it's one.
Long, long term, I'm not sure what the plan is. That would be an option that would come before you.
This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open this up to the public to make any comment. There are no con, oh, we have a comment. You should come forward if you would, just state your name.
I'm Guy Salmeri. I live right there down, if you come down 1900 East, we go right down, trying to see, so if you go right down 1900 and you kind of dogleg down, and that's my house right there next to Rogers, yeah, right there. So my question is, one, is what about access? Is it, are we only going to access just 1900 East for that? And then how, we're already having problems up 1900 East with those industrial buildings, like the little four wheeler shop and, and all them other guys going up 1900 parking on that road for access to get in and out of our house? So the question I have is, is, is there any other exit or entrance that can be put on that, or do you even consider that? And then how, how thick and, how dense, dense is it going to be? I don't, I don't know what he's proposing, but I'm not opposed to the, to the industrial. It's just I'm curious of how we're going to access it and keep, because we got, so the conservatory district owns that pipeline right away that goes through there, right, right above him. It goes all the way down, and then there's an easement that goes down the side of my driveway, right on his wall there. But, so it's just the access, it's just the traffic. They've already got renters down in there, and it's not, it's not a big deal right now, but I can see if it's pretty high density industrial, you know, what, what's the access going to be like and what's the traffic going to be like? The other concern I have is the storm drain water that comes down 1900, if you was to look at right at the end of the asphalt, like right at the end of the blue line right there, that water that comes down 1900 just runs right onto our, just runs wild. I have to deal with that every time the damn road floods, it comes down, goes down across into Jerry Nelson's property, comes across. We put a big culvert all the way down through there, because the conservatory district has a right of way there, we put a pipe in there, but there's no storm drain box that catches the water on the end of 1900. I don't know if that's supposed to be brought up now, or if you guys want to talk about that, or if that's an issue right now, we, we, we address that later, I don't know. Barco, which is right there beside it, they put a detention pond on this side of the road, but it's the other side of the road that causes all the grief. So that would be my only concern. We live right there, and then my mom and dad live right next to me, so we should have that easement going right down through there, so. That would be my only concern.
Thank you, Guy.
So just for clarification, Guy, this, this would be something, this is just general, general plan amendment, so it's basically just saying, no one's ever going to, no one's going to build estate lots out there, it's, it's just going to be continuous industrial with the rest of his land. Any, any use that he would do, he'd have to bring in with, with all of his zoning and everything else.
Yeah, the, the questions of access, stormwater, all of that are details that'll be reviewed with a building permit and site plan application. And if, if those things are not adequately addressed up to code, they get denied. Yeah. Well, I, I think you're smart to bring it up now. We don't consider those elements when we're looking at general plan designations. Really, the consideration at this level is, what's the right use for this in the future? And then if they decide to then bring a plan for this future use, we'll then review that for ingress egress, what, all, all of the issues that you brought up. And so there would be additional public hearings in the future for you to be noticed of and to bring up. But yeah, at, at this level, we don't, we don't deny or approve based on the technical compliance with the code on those elements.
Comment and given your input, it's very good input.
Yeah. Eldon, can you pull up that exhibit again, too? Why do I feel like the exhibit doesn't represent that full chunk? Okay. So he's just got that portion to the east. Those other three partials are already, so he's just trying to combine that fourth partial into the, yeah. Okay. No, perfect, thanks, Guy, because that did help me clarify, too, as you look at the exhibit, it's the small chunk, so now he's just combining it all into the same, same zoning.
Correct, yeah, he's currently using the land that's not in line with, with the zoning and general plan, so they're, they're trying to get there, to be in compliance with the application.
Okay.
If you go out there and look at him, he's got three, three lots that are all industrial, and this one, it's full industrial, too. I mean, there's no way you're going to put a house, you know, in the middle of that. So he's just making it all the same.
Yeah, okay. All right, are there any other comments from the public on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing and look for a motion.
Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to approval of G dash 25 dash 03, a request to amend the general plan land use map located approximately 925 South, 1900 East, state to the proposed industrial general planned land use designation, and send it to city council for consideration.
Commissioner Tupau, I second that.
All right, I have a first from Commissioner Anderson, a second from Commissioner Tupau. Individual voting, Anderson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Tupau.
Aye.
And I'm Mitchell, and I'm a aye as well. All right. Now I have item 4D, public hearing for consideration and recommendation to city council, zone change, Z 25 dash 06, from C3 to R112, and open space, located at Rocky Point Circle and Arizona Drive. Applicant is American Land Consulting. I'll turn the time over to Eldon for description, what's your...
Thank you, commissioners, again. Here's, here's the map, kind of the aerial, we're looking, sits up top. Kind of get your bearings there, I'll pull up this, this other map here. The requested change is from the current zoning of C3 to a proposed R112 and open space zoning designation. This larger hashed out green area, they're proposing R112, and then beyond this line here is proposed open space, kind of around the perimeter of it there. General plan for this area is residential low density, which supports three to four units an acre, commonly associated with 10,000 square foot lots and larger. The surrounding zoning to this parcel is R112 to the north, T3 to the east and south, and St. George Residential to the west. The R112 and open space request is for the purpose of developing the land into a single family residential development. The proposal is asking to change 4.45 acres to R112 and 0.97 acres to open space. The project is in the hillside and was reviewed by the hillside review board, which minutes are attached to this report. The applicant is asked to bring forward a special agreement with this zone change that the city council will need to approve. In the agreement, the applicant is asking that if the nine lot preliminary plat is not approved, as shown, they would be able to revert back to the C3 zoning. With the applicant asking for this special agreement, which involves the preliminary plat, the preliminary plat has been included with this exhibit, so everything is known at this time. If the zone change and accompanying agreement is approved, the applicant would need to then submit the required pre-plat application for city approval. Staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash 25 dash 06 for the zone change request from C3 to the proposed R112 and open space zoning designation, and this goes on to city council. And that's based on the following findings, as stated in staff report. That concludes staff report, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Eldon. Do any of the commissioners have questions for Eldon?
Is the road 50 or 35 feet wide? Because it says both, but it says, is it 50 from property line to property line, or from curb and gutter to?
Your question was on the roadway width? I would assume it's going to be a...
It's what?
Yeah, that one there, Eldon, the one, next one over. What you're, what you're seeing on that one right there, Eldon, is right of way width, which is the 50 foot right of way, and then they're showing the 35 foot, which is the width of the asphalt surface. So the right of way from property line to property line would be 50 feet, and then your asphalt surface between curb and gutter is 35 feet.
Is that generally what we're okay with?
Yeah, that's our standard residential.
Okay.
Again, I, I just want to reiterate, this application is unique. Typically, we do not show pre-plats with zone change. However, due to the applicant bringing this agreement forth, we needed to do so, so I just, I want to make it known, we're not in the habit of, of showing pre-plats during the zone change process.
Commissioner Davis, and, you know, Eldon, thank you for that. I mean, you know, I recognize that the zoning, fundamentally, we're here to talk about the zoning, I guess that's the primary issue with this being C3, which doesn't seem to really fit. Understand, you know, the ideal to, the objective here to move to residential, it's, I think it's helpful and, and interesting that reading the land use committees, or hillside, the hillside committee's comments and, and their concerns over what has preliminarily been laid out, that, I think that brings up some concerns, certainly for me and, you know, potentially for the rest of, well. And better to get some of this aired today, I would say, rather than having any surprises down the road. But, you know, fundamentally, I can see that, you know, the first step is that we need to address the move from commercial to residential.
That's right, that's the purpose of tonight's hearing. The applicant's requested agreement, we asked that the city agree in contract that if the preliminary plat be denied at the appropriate time, that the city would allow the zone change proposed tonight to revert back to C3. As staff reviewed and discussed this, we felt that that would be equitable to, to give them that opportunity. And so that's essentially the gist of the agreement. If, if the bodies see fit to change the zone from C3 to R112, which staff recommends be done, then if the preliminary plat application is denied, the agreement would allow the applicant to revert back to C3 if they wanted to. And so while they're kind of running in parallel, I really do think the essence of tonight is, what's the, what's the, what's the best use, or the, what's the, what's the realistically appropriate use of this area up on top of the mesa there? Is it partial or is it residential? And if you feel like residential is a good fit, you should take public comment and then probably consider, you know, a motion to recommend approval for a zone change to residential. That would then preserve the preliminary plat vote for the right time when it would come along. When that comes along, we'll talk about the agreement as well. And so that agreement is, is presented to you so you know that it's out there, that there is that concept, that staff has said, we're okay if that, if that trails alongside with, with the discussions on, on this piece of land.
Thank you, Thad, but just from my understanding, approval here or recommendation for the zoning change has no impact, that is not approval for the agreement, for the signed agreement?
Correct. The, the zone change has, the zone change application tonight, it would solely be if approved, sorry, if recommended for approval and then taken the council unapproved, would change the zone designation, change the zone map only. Two things would still need approval. The contract would need to be approved by the city council, and preliminary plat and final plat would still need to go through their, their approval processes if, if it were to be residential. If it were to be a commercial use, there would still be, you know, hillside review, which is, which has happened on this one already, right? There would still be, the agreement might cease to, cease to exist if they revert back to, the agreement would allow them to revert back, but when they go to develop it commercial, you know, the agreement would have no bearing any further, they would just be dealing with their, their commercial site plan and whatever their planning were to be for that use.
Residential preliminary plat would come back through us?
Correct. Yep. So this body would be the deciding body on the residential preliminary plat. The city council would be the body with authority to adopt the contract of the nature that they proposed.
Thank you.
All right, this is here for the public hearing, so I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to share on this item?
I'm Jackson, I live on Rocky Point Circle. The road that...
The road that currently runs through there, I think is a private road, is that correct? Private property?
Correct, yeah, there's a radius of notification that's, that we require be notified at the expense of the applicant for a preliminary plat consideration and public hearing.
Is it possible to get a printout or a picture of that preliminary plat map?
Not during this meeting, but if you came and visited the, the Planning and Zoning Office during the week, I think that they'd probably be willing to help you with that.
Okay, thanks.
Just to confirm that, sir, sorry, I forget your name, just to make sure that you do get the notification, are you, like, could we kind of go over the, because he asked if he would get notified, I'm just wondering where he lives in relationship to this?
I live at Rocky Point Circle and Angels Landing, which is right next to that.
So you received notice on this one?
Yes.
Yeah, so you're within the radius, you'll receive notice on the next ones.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
My name's Randy Roberts, I live on Montana Lane, which is directly below where this subdivision is going to be. And the reason, we got several concerns on the bottom of there. One of them is drainage, big deal, because we've spent thousands of dollars, my neighbor and I, in order to mitigate the drainage, we had to put in retaining walls, we had to put in river rock and stuff like that, because we get a real deluge of water coming off those rocks up there. And so, if the building is, I mean, if it's approved, the stormwater mitigation is, is a real concern of how that they're going to do that. Because if they're going to change the way the drainage comes down off the hill, then that's going to affect three or four houses there, because we've already, we've already put in, like I say, retaining walls and...
Are you, are you below this?
Yeah, can you bring up the, the picture of the, the Google Map one?
The reason I ask is, is just, if they, if they go ahead and develop this, it would actually, it'll reduce the amount of stormwater coming down the hill, because they have to take their storm, they can't send it back down the hill, they have to then send it to the street and then it goes down the storm drain system, so by, by developing that, that'll actually reduce the amount of water coming off the hill. I mean, you'll still have water coming down the actual hillside.
Right, but will, will they change it in any way, that's, that's the problem?
No, they won't, if you look at the yellow map, anything past the yellow map, they can't touch, and that's what it is, but... Anything, anything below the yellow line that he has here, that's, it stays as is. But anything above that, any water that like would currently collects and then drops down, those, those ravines, has to get collected and then sent up to the street and then into the city storm drain system. So you'd still have water coming down the hillside, but you'd have significantly less than you currently have. So what, what the Commissioner's describing to you is the city's standards on storm drain. So there will be a change if, if approved and, and if developed. The proposal changes that, that, the surface of that substantially, significantly. There will be grade changes and a lot of that. Again, if both of those are approved, the city staff would then enforce against that lot of requirement that they collect all of their stormwater on their lots and deliver it into the road and the road's storm system to, to then take it down and off the hill. And so, the city standard is that they cannot let their runoff leave their lots onto others. Once they come in and touch it, they're obligated to catch it, collect it, and convey it into the city system. Today, because that land has never been touched, the standard is the water runs where it's always run, which is what you're describing. So there will be changes, if it were approved, there absolutely would be substantial changes that are significant. But, but I think what the Commissioner's saying is, right now, every drop that hits that, that area flows in the natural course of just slopes. And if approved and if developed, those would be changed and the city standard requiring that they catch and collect it and take it to the street would be enforced. And so, and so every drop would not flow in the natural course anymore.
Well, that, that's good, because I mean, we spent thousands of dollars trying to get this water to run away.
Well, it, it sounds good, but there's, I mean, there's, everybody's not always happy even when that happens, because there's, things change and people aren't always happy with change.
And if, if they do build that, what's to mitigate the, the construction? I mean, we got large red rocks hang right over our property that, how do they make sure that they're not going to disturb those and they're not going to come down on our property and how, how do we?
So there's...
They got to cut 20 feet off of that up there.
There's no, there's no construction sheriff. And so they need to sheriff themselves. And if they were to cause those type of things to happen and create damage, they would have responsibility for that. And so, there's not a, there's not a net in place that's just observing and sherifying construction activities like that, but there's certainly a, a system in place that can make them responsible for it.
All right, and, and the last one, I guess, is the retaining walls, that they're eight foot high retaining walls, I guess is on there. Now, will they, will they be forced to do them on natural rock? Or are we going to see a retaining wall like the one just north of us, that looks like the Great Wall of China? What's the Great?
Well, yeah, there's, everybody points at the Great Wall of China, but right next to it is the Great Wall of Siam, right? And the next, right next to that is the Great Wall of Indy, that whole area is full of ugly walls. And not all of them, not all of them look good, right? Not all of them have been styled with, with, you know, natural colors and natural shapes.
It's their choice on how, what you...
Well, the reason why is our City Council hasn't given us a code that requires that walls be styled or matching in nature or color. The requirement is, is more in the technicality of the functionality, it's that they be engineered. And so the city requires that walls like that be subject to, to robust engineering. And our city hasn't yet adopted a, a design guideline for those type of walls.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So that brings up a question in my mind. Like, we have the Hillside Committee that is monitoring what happens to the hillside. I'm just wondering if maybe we're missing something there, because yeah, the, the type of retaining wall that you put there will have an effect on the visual look of that hillside.
Yeah, so the Hillside Committee is not a design or, or a stylistic committee. They look at it and then, and they only look at the hillsides that are, that are located within the city's hillside protection zone. And the purpose of the committee is, the city's code on hillside protection says you can't build there unless you mitigate the concerns of the, of the Hillside Committee. And so the Hillside Committee is intended to be a committee mostly comprised of non-employee engineers and, and experts from the outside industry will come and serve on the committee, they'll go to the site, they'll look at it, and then they produce a list of recommendations, which they think allow the land to be usable, but also mitigate the concerns that they have related to that, that portion of hillside that's being protected by the hillside protection zone. And so, it's really a mechanism where, where the city has said, look, this hillside's important, we're going to protect it. If the city protected it to the extent that no development was permitted, the city is looking at probably a regulatory taking where they need to pay and buy the land, because they're not allowing the landowner to make any use of it. The Hillside Committee's role is to go in there, wrestle with the realities on the ground, wrestle with ideas and, and suggest a way that it could have commercial use, but while also mitigating the concerns of, related to that hillside. In this one, there's, it's not the views that they're worried about, but as you'll see, there's significant red rock sloping coming down off that point. And so, you've read the report, or you have access to the report if you want to read it. And, and so their concerns are in there and they've made some recommendations as to how to mitigate those, while also being able to make, you know, you know, commercial use of the land. When I say commercial use, I'm, I'm referring in this case to subdividing and selling lots for residential building.
Eldon, this Commissioner Anderson, can you zoom in on that map right there for us? Zoom in on the parcel and then go above the parcel, north of the parcel? Yeah, keep going, right there, and go to the right. So I just want to illustrate just kind of what this actually looks like. You can see the property lines here, and then you see all these homes, so this is Angels Landing. All these homes here where they've got a flat, you know, law, and then they, you can see the retaining walls there, they're all about eight feet tall. And then there's a bunch of area past that, you can see on the, where the white lines are the property lines. So that's kind of what they're proposing here, the way this is, for example, is it's a, you've got a no build zone and then you've got another line, there's like little fences out there, like a no disturb zone, where, so like where some of the question was, you know, how do we keep activity from getting too close to the edge or whatever? Like, that's kind of what it is, if you see how far those property lines went down on that, and then how nothing was touched until way up high, it's the same thing, you've got a no build zone that is up there, they've got little, you know, fences up there that say you can't go, you can't even touch this. Even though they own the property, they can't touch it, and then there's a further one past that that's a no build zone. And if you look at the yellow here, that's kind of what the yellow is representing, I'm not sure Eldon, or maybe Adam, maybe you would be a better one to ask this, which, if, if the yellow is the no build or is it the, or is it the, the no disturb zone, I'm not sure. But does that make sense though for some of the questions that you guys were having in the audience? As far as how far do they come and so forth? And as far as, I mean, the question that you had Commissioner Mitchell in line with them is, if someone is building a house on there and if they do dump water down the hillside, and the way that it gets enforced is you come into the, the building or the zoning department, you say, hey, they're shooting water down the hill. And they go up and they look at it, and if they are, then they make them fix it, and if they're, you know, I mean, that's just how it is, I mean, they're supposed to have the water pumped up and go to the street. Now, it doesn't mean that somebody might not just shoot a pipe down, but that's how it gets enforced, is if they are shooting water down the canyon, you go and tell the city and they go and make them put it in some pump and run it up to the street. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so this, this Commissioner Mitchell, I think more, my thoughts were is, and I like seeing the visual of what's been done, but in my mind, I'm thinking if you have just the concrete blocks as your retaining, that it's not decorative versus in those views of the lot, or the lots above, they've got some rift rap, like they've got some rock or some rift rap that's above, and then you have the retaining, just to create a better visual that we don't just have. And I'm sure that that's hopefully the case, that it's not just going to be a cabobulated mix of retaining up there.
Yeah, so Adam Allen with American Land Consulting, yes, so that is the plan, that's what we discussed with Hillside, that's what we discussed with everybody, it will be sandstone rock up there, we're trying not to do what was adjacent to us. We want it to look nicer than that.
Yeah.
We don't really want it to be nice or visible, that's why we're looking at walkout basement, you know, just keep it smaller, keep it, you know, so they're not giant overbearing walls.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. We're still in public comment. Yeah, are there other, yeah, is there any other public comments? Anyone else that wants to? Yeah, come up to the mic so we can get on the public record.
Cut off the top of that hill or just build way up on top of it? Don Jackson.
Sorry, restate the question?
There's a big hill there, big old giant rock, are you going to build on top of it or are you going to cut the top of it off?
Yeah, I don't know if we want to let you answer.
We'll ask the, the applicant to answer that when, when he gets up there.
Do we have any other public comment?
I hate to dig in too much to the specifics of, of that pre-plat, because that will be coming back forth and, and could change, you know, shouldn't, but there is that possibility, so I, I hate to directly answer that question at this time when we're here just discussing a zone change.
Okay, you want to address it right now?
They are proposing at this time to, to cut that hill off. I, I believe approximately 20, 20 feet would shave it down is the proposal at this time, but again, that's not a direct answer. That's just shown what they've included in these documents.
Yeah, we won't actually see the true plat until, if this is approved and it goes forward, then they would work on that. All right, any other public comment? If there's no other public comment, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners look for a motion.
Actually, if we could, if I could ask the applicant to just kind of get it all, you know, think of... When we're, you're talking about retention, you're talking about the, the portion that, for simplicity, is facing I-15?
Are retaining walls? Actually, their retaining walls are right now currently on the east and the west side. So not specifically pointing I-15, no.
But, not that it has bearing on this, but what are you planning on building the retaining walls out of?
Sandstone, natural sandstone like up there, yeah.
And again, this, you know, this, this particular topic is about a zone change.
Yep, and I, I did...
But we're getting, you know...
And I did want to say that any, the improvements that we do up there for the gentleman that's below us, that will reduce the amount of water that comes to him, and, and that's kind of what you were saying, but we will, that pretty much that yellow area now on top there of the area that's up there will no longer flow to him. So it will reduce significantly the amount of water that comes off that hill.
So Adam, my, to my earlier question, is the yellow, is that the, is that the buildable area or is that the, the?
That's, that's the buildable area, the non-buildables, the white. And we've, what we're going to do is we're actually going to cut the lots off and dedicate it as open space. That way, nobody ever feels like they can go down there and do anything, so it'll be dedicated to the city.
Dedicated to who?
You, the city, open space? I'm assuming, you know, I was asked to make it open space, we don't want open space.
Well, no, there's, there's, open space gets used in HOAs all the time, so I'm just trying to, is this going to be a little association? Because those associations frequently keep and maintain open space as well.
Okay, I apologize, I guess I had made the assumption in most of the other cities I deal with, when I have big hillside cuts like this, they want it.
I'm not saying yes or no, I'm not saying yes or no.
So I guess either way, we'll have to work out what that is.
Okay.
It is shown in open space here in this exhibit.
Yeah.
Which could be fine tuned a little bit, but...
So then, I guess that leads me to another question though, if, if that's all dedicated to open space, whether it's HOA or city or whatever, then effectively that makes all those lots smaller, right?
They will be smaller, yeah.
So do you know what?
The smallest lot will be 12,500 square feet.
So that's why you're asking for R-112, is, I got you.
Yeah, because with, with that, what we talked about doing there, it'll make the smallest lot 12,500.
So if you left that area dedicated to the individual lots, like they did St. Angels Landing right next door, then it'd be R-1 half, basically.
Yeah, but yeah, but after conversations with the city and the concerns, if somebody, you know, it's happened before, or somebody's like, hey, I own it down there, I'm going to go do something anyways, was kind of the thought behind that, well, we want to avoid that.
So that makes a lot more sense though, in my mind, because essentially you're, you're putting lots on there as if it were R-1, R, R-1 half, half acre or larger lots, but then you're trimming off everything that they can't build and then putting it on as open space, which makes it R-112, smaller lots, but it's not really R-112.
Yeah, yeah, the overall density is R-1 half.
So that makes more sense to me, because that was one of my questions, like, why in the world do you put an R-112 up on here?
Yeah.
I don't understand, R-1 half means that the lots have to be half acre or larger. R-112 means they have to be 12,000 square feet or larger, which is like in between a quarter acre and a third acre. But basically, he's, he's putting on half acre or larger lots, but then the stuff that, that you can't build on, he's going to trim off and turn it back into open space, which makes the lots appear smaller than they are.
And, no, and I understand that, Commissioner Davis, just, again, we're talking about a two-step process.
Yep, yep.
Today's zoning.
Bring all this stuff back, a little bit detailed.
And it will, and it will, because, you know, the Hillside Committee's report viewed it and they clearly have, have, have definite concerns about, you know, maintaining, you know, the, the natural landscape. You know, candidly, this is signature topography for this area in Washington City. And there's certainly needs... And there certainly needs to be consideration to preserve that. So I'm confident that's going to come up during the next conversation. And especially if we're talking about lopping off top of it and the visibility and everything else. So I'm sure you guys are taking that.
Yep.
You've been working it.
All right. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Sorry, we, well, yeah, we've actually closed the public hearing, but can I reopen it, Thad? We'll reopen it. Yeah, you want to come up to the mic and apologize for not speaking loud enough?
My question is, is this the only meeting that's going to be, that we're going to be able to have any access to what is going to happen here, or?
No, you will be notified when it comes back, when, when they've actually got a true plat. Typically, tonight is just to make the zone change. If it is accepted, then they would go back and design their plat and how they want the lots to look, and then it would come forward again, and you would be notified of that next meeting.
Before, before final approval, then?
Correct.
Just so you know, normally.
Robert Day. What's that?
Could you state your name?
Robert Day, and I'm a resident of that Angels Landing Drive there.
Right, thank you.
Normally, you don't, normally they wouldn't show us any of this stuff.
Yeah.
For tonight's meeting. They're, he's, he's showing it because he's trying to kind of get some questions answered about what our thoughts are for the next meeting. That's also.
My biggest question, and I'm sure everybody out there is thinking the same thing, is how fast this is going to, how fast this can go, and when will they make that final determination? As to, to the approval of that.
So we don't, we don't, the city doesn't know. Because how fast they make their applications with their final plans? What we know is when they do, and a meeting gets scheduled, we will notice the residents within the required radius. And so we, we require that the applicant buy stamps and buy envelopes and mail you a notice that our staff in the planning office make them, make them produce. And so.
That's why we're here.
So exactly, and you're going to get that on the next ones.
Yeah.
But do I know when that'll be or how fast it'll go? No, because the applicants drive the speed of their applications. Sometimes there's a zone change and it takes three years until they submit a proposal, right? There's a zone change and you got the proposal in four weeks. That's entirely a time function driven by the, the private world. When they do show up, we have an obligation from our code to send notice to the neighbors and you'll get that again.
So, so when and how do they make that final decision on changing that? That's the question.
So when is the meeting that gets scheduled after they make the application? How is a board looks at it, and then they have a motion, and there's a vote that needs to pass by a majority of the quorum?
So is it done, is it done without a meeting at all?
It's done with a public meeting that you'll receive notice of.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Tonight is specifically the zone change from commercial to the option to do residential.
So Adam, can I, again, I'm not, I'm not telling you what you should or shouldn't do, but could I make a suggestion, what I, what I would do if I were you?
Sure.
I think it'd probably be easier if you do like what Angels Landing did, instead of doing R-112, I would go R-1 half and just, and just designate on the plat that those are no disturb areas. If you change it R-112, one, like Thad said, it's questionable whether the city would take it. Two, it would lower all the property values because suddenly it's a smaller lot when they go to resell. The way they did in Angels Landing, they kept all those. They just, it's designate on the plat as no disturb, no whatever. I would do that. And then my only other suggestion, I, I think lot five and six, I mean, those are really big lots. I don't think you, you definitely, you necessarily need to go that far out with the buildable area because I don't think they'll use it. And I think you could, you could make, you know, the Hillside Committee people happier if you shaved a little bit off it, but I, I don't think I would get rid of the lots like they were saying. It's a big buildable area. Not saying you have to, but it could be done. The only thing, if you went R-1 half, is that lot three is the only one that's too small. And I personally, with, with the kind of houses you're going to be building up there, I'd probably cut one lot out and just divvy them up and basically just go one lot less and make them all R-1 half is what I would. Okay. And I appreciate that. And we, we, actually, we changed it at the request of the city. That's the reason why we've switched to what we're doing now. It is doing the open space is at the request of the city, so that's why we're doing that. Planning staff, and we've had some conversations with some other members that think that that would be the best thing to do with it. So.
But that is something that would be readdressed, right? After this change, it could be re rediscussed.
So Adam, you're saying somebody at the city told you that the city would accept ownership of those pieces? No, 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 that somebody at the city said that we've discussed with the city to make it open space, not part of the lots. I see.
Yeah, we, we wanted to incorporate this open space here as a guarantee that, that that reassurance of, hey, we're going to stay off this hillside, which incorporates with this line here, this no disturb line. So it was just some reassurance that Adam's on board staying out of that, that significant forty percent or higher area is why that's shown, open space.
So Commissioner Anderson's comment about still making it half, but then putting in a restriction on what the owner can do, is that possible? I mean, it sounds like it is.
That's what Angels Landing is plotted as.
So you could still guarantee that there's not going to be disturbance there, but allow them to do, and then they remain, you know, keep the ownership of the property.
But then that, that also means that the buyer would be buying a larger lot with unusable space. Or a larger lot that has space that they can't use, instead of paying for real, a a usable space lot like how it's plotted right now.
Well, they're paying, they're, they're paying for the view to be up there. I mean, the lot up there on the hillside is way, so. We, yeah, we don't have an objection to either way. That's why we showed the open space. We're fine with it being open space and not being part of the lots and. I, I, my only thing, I, I just think it should be R-1 half, not R-112, for a variety of reasons. One of which, you know, you're going to cut at least a million dollars worth of value off those lots for the people that eventually own them. So I wouldn't do that if it were me.
So what does that do here, right? We're approving it for R-112. If you did want to change it, then what happens?
So we either approve it or don't. I'm just, you're, you're just identifying issues.
Yeah, it's just a suggestion.
I would change it R-1 half if it were me, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, so then they would have to come back and go back through the whole, yeah.
You can always go larger on the lot size. If this is approved as R-112, he can plot an R-8, an R-1 half in the R-112.
Okay.
There's no issue there.
I'm not saying I wouldn't approve of it. I'm just saying that's what I would do.
All right. Any other questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
And again, Commissioners, there's been a lot of discussion on a lot of the peripheral because it's all relevant, but the motion tonight would be a recommendation to the city council on a zone change. Would be from the C-3 to the proposed or the applied for zone of R-112.
Thank you, Thad.
Motion to recommend approval onto the city council of Z-25-06. Request to rezone approximately 5.51 acres located at Rocky Point Circle and Arizona Drive from C-3 zoning to propose R-112 and OS zoning designation, open space zoning designation, subject to the findings in the staff report.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
All right, I have it first by Commissioner Tupou, second by Commissioner Anderson, individual voting. Anderson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Tupou.
Aye.
I'm Mitchell, and I'm a aye as well. All right, item 5A. Continuation of consideration and recommendation to the city council, zone change Z-25-17 from R-110 to PUDR. Located at 990 East George Washington Boulevard. The applicant is Lance Miller. And I turn the time over to Eldon for staff comment.
Thank you, Commissioners. This item was tabled to today. The applicant is not ready to move forward at this time. They weren't able to gather the needed documents as requested, or given time to, to gather. They're asking this to be tabled to August 6th, which is the next planning commission.
All right, thank you. So do we make them, okay, so we still need a motion to table, okay. So I'll look for a motion.
Commissioner Anderson, I make a motion to table Z-25-17 at the request of the applicant until the August 6th, planning commission.
Commissioner Davis seconds the motion.
All right, I have it first by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Davis, individual voting. Anderson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Tupou.
Aye.
And Mitchell, and I am a aye as well. All right, that concludes planning commission. I'd look for a motion for adjournment.
Commissioner Tupou, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
First by Commissioner Tupou, second by Commissioner Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will now have a five-minute recess prior to starting land use meeting. meeting. Let's welcome you to our to the land use authority meeting. And look for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Commissioner Davis, I move that we approve the agenda.
Commissioner Tupou, I second that.
First by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Tupou. All in favor?
Aye.
And we now look for a motion to an approval of the minutes from our previous meeting of June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Commissioner Davis, I move that we approve the minutes of the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five land use authority meeting.
Commissioner Tupou, I second that.
I have it first by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Tupou. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, are there any declarations of abstinence?
I have none.
I can't say that word in conference.
Abstentions.
Thank you, Commissioner Tupou. All right, item four A. Is the consideration to approve Buena Vista Commercial Minor located at approximately three hundred and fifty west Buena Vista Boulevard. The applicant being Horrocks Engineering. And Eldon, I turn the time over to you for staff comment.
Thank you, land use. I'll turn the map on here. Orient yourself. Looks like our GIS has already plotted these lots. We're right in here off of Buena Vista, which is great. They're ahead of the game. We'll zoom in on the map. The applicant is asking to split the current ten point two-three acres into seven parcels for commercial development. The current zoning at this location is C three. Surrounding zoning is R three and PUDR to the north, C two to the east, open space, which is I fifteen to the south and C three to the west. Staff has reviewed the proposal, finding it conforms to the standards as set forth in the zoning regulations and subdivision ordinances of the city. Staff recommends the land use authority approve the Buena Vista Commercial Plaza subdivision based on the following findings and conditions stated in staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Can you, has staff considered? My memory is that the land use authority was given plat approval for residential plats, this one being a commercial with this many units. Do you know if if the planning and zoning office reviewed whether this should have gone to the planning commission and then on to the city council or to the land use?
Yeah, great question. From my recollection, it's it's based off of units per lot for for residential only. So from my understanding, this would be approved by the land use authority.
Is there a way to verify that or is there still a concern?
I'm reviewing city code. So in in ten dash three dash two, subsection A, it says for subdivisions consisting of two units or less on an individual parcel. The following will will apply and then subsection four of A says land use authority. And then there's another section B for subdivisions consisting of three units or more on an individual parcel. And then subsection four says that it'll be forwarded on to the planning commission. And the planning commission will have preliminary hearing and then they'll recommend it on to the city council. And so it looks like the dividing line is two two units, land use authority, three to planning commission. This is a recent change to city law based on a recent change to state law. And so we here at the city aren't great at administering yet. Are you looking at those references, Eldon? Do you feel that? Do you feel that this fits into the two or less or the three or more category?
I view this as two or less. Here, they're, we've got one large parcel, they're breaking it down into seven individual lots. No units are being proposed on these lots. It's kind of how I view it.
So is it based on lots or units?
It says units, so it's based off of units.
So what would be the purpose of dividing into seven if there were not going to be seven separate units?
Currently, it's one, one lot, right? One parcel?
It it is. Our maps don't reflect that, but I I believe it was just one parcel out the gate.
I guess then the question to add is is the determining factor its current state or its proposed state? I think Eldon's reading the word units consistent with the city's interpretation of that word throughout its code. It's referring to structures or buildings. I still just have this memory that the city council retained the right to do commercial plats with them. And so I'm still trying to find that. Is it the final plat state, Eldon, or is that?
I I don't remember distinguishing between commercial and residential. It was on on plating, obviously for the use of a building, you know, conditional use, PUDC, C threes. Those approvals all go to council, but for plating, it came down to, you know, like a multifamily unit. Two or more would then go to council for approval.
We we do have one city councilman here. Do we put any pressure on him and see if he remembers?
No, I don't. He he doesn't get. I don't mean to say anything to demean him, but the city council acts as a body in a public meeting, so we probably shouldn't put him on the spot. Let me keep looking through here for a minute just to see if there's, if I have any memory of what I what I think I'm remembering. If you wanted to skip to another item while I did some.
Just skip to the next one.
Okay, yeah, let's let's go on to item five A. And this one is, yeah, the public hearings. Five A, public hearing and consideration to approve a preliminary plat for Standing Rock West Phases three through five, located at Long Valley Road and Riggs Loop Drive. The applicant being D.R. Horton. I turn the time over to Eldon for staff comments.
Thank you. Give me just a minute. I'll let the map load here. So here's Long Valley subdivision. We're looking at my cursor. We're we're in this area here. Kind of the southeast corner. Computer's a little bit slow. I'll leave it on that screen while we get through staff report here. This particular subdivision is proposing one hundred and eighty-one single-family lots on an area covering sixty-nine point one-nine acres. The zoning designation of this location is PCD. The surrounding zoning is PCD to the northeast, south and west. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends the land use authority approve the preliminary plat for Standing Rock West Phases three through five at Long Valley subdivision based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right, thank you, Eldon. Any commissioners have questions for Eldon at this time? All right, I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone here who has comments on this item. Does not look like there are any public comments, so I close the public hearing. And look for a motion.
Commissioner Anderson, make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Standing Rock West Phase three through five at Long Valley subdivision located approximately Long Valley Road and Desert Varnish Drive with the findings and conditions outlined by staff.
Commissioner Tupou, I second that.
I have a first by Commissioner Anderson, a second by Commissioner Tupou. Individual voting, Anderson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Tupou.
Aye.
And Mitchell, and I am aye as well. All right, item five B is a public hearing and consideration to approve a preliminary plat amendment for Vineyard at Alea, located Washington Fields Road and Red Slopes Parkway. The applicant is Holmes, Holmes. I turn the time over to Eldon for staff report.
Looks like IS is working on the maps here. I'll read through this while they're getting that ready to pull up on the screen. This subdivision was approved with sixty-five townhomes and one hundred and eight single-family lots for a total of a hundred and seventy-three units back on November twentieth of twenty twenty-four. They're proposing an amended preliminary plat that consists of two hundred units on an area covering thirty-one point four-two acres. The zoning designation at this location is PCD, which is and has a medium-high density in this area, which is given a sixteen-unit-per-acre density. The proposal is well below this allowance, even with that increase in units. The surrounding zoning is PCD to the north, east, west, and C three to the south. The proposal includes one hundred and five single-family homes and ninety-five townhome units. All of the townhomes will provide a minimum of a two-car garage with all of the driveways being eighteen feet wide and twenty feet long. The proposal includes twenty visitor parking stalls, which is adequate for the proposal. The amenities have been relocated closer to the townhomes, which will better serve the townhome residents. These amenities will include a pavilion and playground and playground area covering twenty-one thousand five hundred square feet. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff recommends land use authority approve the preliminary plat amendment for the Vineyard at Alea subdivision based on the findings and conditions stated in staff report. That concludes staff report. I'll pull up the maps here and answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Eldon. To, are there any questions for Eldon at this time?
My question is with the increased density in in this phase, where where are they taking it from?
They're allowed to flex those units out.
Right, I know, though. I'm just like, do we have any idea where that density is is coming from?
I.
Sure, somewhere down the road, but just curious where they're taking the density from to add it to this piece.
Yeah, just it it's a vague answer at this point, just the overall density is, you know, another you, another pod will be not as dense as it could have been. I don't think there was a specific area.
Maybe you can answer that when we get to it, Brandy. Just curious where we're taking it from.
Do we have any other questions? I can open it for. All right, I'm going to open this item to the public for the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to comment? Doesn't look like we have any comments, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioner Anderson, did you have questions for the applicant?
Just the one that I had.
Just the one?
Yeah.
Brandy, do you want to come?
Make myself useful.
Yeah.
Brandy Walker, civil science, representing the applicant here tonight. Who are also in attendance. But Eldon's response is pretty accurate. We are bookkeeping every unit down to the one-unit count. And so it will pull it from somewhere else to allocate it separately. It is kind of moving around out there with, you know, neighborhoods as they morph and grow and develop. But yes, we do account for every rooftop.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brandy. So that then becomes the city's responsibility to keep tallies on those counts as well. All right, if there are no other comments or questions, I'd look for a motion.
Commissioner Davis, I'll make a motion for approval of the preliminary plat amendment for Vineyard at Alea subdivision located at Washington Fields Road, Led S- Led Slopes Parkway per the currently the findings and conditions as outlined in staff report.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
All right, I have it first by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting, Anderson.
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Tupoe?
Aye.
And I am Mitchell, and I as well.
Just for reference, this is the correct map here. I apologize.
Does that change anything?
Correct, yes. Yes, I've just been thinking of a few things up here other than what we should be thinking about.
All right. Thanks, Eldon. Okay. Uh, item five C is a public hearing and consideration to approve, approve a preliminary plat for Stillwater subdivision located at one seventy-two East Nelson Ranch Road. The applicant is American Land Consulting. And turn the time over to Eldon for staff report.
Bear with me here. I'll try to get the map in location. This is the area that we're looking at. Again, the, the screen's frozen. I'm not able to pull up the specific site plan. I don't know if Thad would be able to airplay it and, and show this item or.
Can you read airplay, Eldon?
Uh, item five C, the preliminary plat, just the specifics of it?
Yeah, I'll get there. We'll need I T to switch the monitor to airplay.
Dave, are you able to allow Thad to, uh, airplay?
So I'm on, can you, can you take yours off or is that through I T that it's? You said item five C?
Yes.
What do you want to see first? Exhibit or briefing document?
Exhibit, please. I believe it's a just scroll down to the first page that shows the individual lots. That should do it right there. Thank you. Their subdivision is proposing eighty-seven single-family lots, ranging from five thousand to ten thousand square feet, with a few other lots being larger. Total acreage for this site is thirty-five point four-two acres, with twenty-three point nine-nine acres being P U D R, and eleven point four-three acres being open space. This is a two-point-four-six density unit per acre ratio for the entire site, and a three-point-six-three density unit per acre ratio for the twenty-three point nine-nine acres. The zoning designation at this location is P U D R. The surrounding zoning is open space to the north, R one-ten to the east, and south, and P U D R to the west. This subdivision will include forty-seven thousand square feet of amenity, and includes two pickleball courts, pavilion, and trail access to the larger public trail running adjacent to the river. The proposal includes building the trail shown on the exhibit, which will be dedicated to and maintained by the city. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends the land use authority approve the preliminary plat for the Stillwater subdivision, based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions as stated in staff report. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
All right. Thank you, Eldon.
As you can see, option two that was previously approved from the zone change has been incorporated. Uh, other than that, nothing has, has been changed. Um, just moving forward with, with that previous approval from the zone change.
Are there any commissioners that have questions for Eldon at this time? All right, this is a public hearing item, so I will open the public hearing at this time. If there's anyone here who has comments on this item. Does not look like there is. I do want to say there was a individual that kind of late had comments that, uh, she emailed out. She missed the deadline before they came to all of us as commissioners. Um, but I just wanted to recognize that, uh, I did have a chance to read Ashley's concerns, but she did have quite a bit there proposed that I think a lot of it was already discussed in previous meetings of her objection to the subdivision. But just thought I would rec, you know, I did see that. All right, so the public hearing is closed. Uh, commissioners, do you have any concerns?
I have some questions for Adam. Um, the lots, the lots along the river, the, the new elevation, are they going to be above the floodplain?
Yes.
So even though we got the floodplain line there, that's where it is with the current elevation, right?
Yeah, the floodplain, because we're not going to do a Lomar to change it officially, we'll stay where it's at, but they will be out of the floodplain. Yeah.
And it looks like, it looks like for the most part, it's outside your setbacks anyways, so.
Yeah.
People shouldn't have an issue with flood insurance or anything because they're not going to be building over.
Anything like that, and so they should be good.
Does the, does the hazard line affect anything as far as their insurance or anything like that or not?
Not once the mitigation is in, that hazard line goes away. And that hazard line is not like an officially recognized by insurance companies or anything. It's more of a tool that was developed after all the floods in oh-five, that the cities have come by and did the study and said, hey, look, this now can erode. We've seen that this is it. We need to make sure we're mitigating this along here. So it's not, it's not produced by FEMA or, or anything like that, so.
So if that's the case, personally, I don't know if I'd put it on the preliminary plat. Or, well, I guess it's not on preliminary plat, it's on your construction drive. But maybe I'd put a note that this line will be removed after lots are raised up or something.
Yeah.
Just because you probably have someone way down the line to look at it and like, wait a minute.
It shouldn't be on the final plat for those phases, so.
Okay. What about lot four-fourteen? Do you know? What's the width of that one? It looks awfully skinny. You able to fit any on there?
I'm not sure which one.
Is that one or that really long skinny one?
Oh, that guy right there. Yeah, it actually meets the same width as the like three-fourteen, three-thirteen.
Okay, so it's.
It's just so long.
It's one of the narrow locks.
It's just long. It's actually wider than those lots. It's just so long. It looks so tiny, so.
I just want to make sure you could build something on it.
Yeah, it's wider than those ones, so. Uh, and we did want to bring up, uh, Leslie Way. We are going to request to change that name, that road. They're thinking Rusty Way. We weren't supposed to use Leslie Way. It's a family name and they didn't want us to use it, so we're, I apologize. We shouldn't have had that on there. That was our fault. Uh, so we'll, we just wanted to make sure that was known, so.
It just took me a minute to find it, so I'm just going to show them it's this, it's a little through street there.
Yeah.
So why did you choose Rusty's name for it? Just teasing.
To be honest with you, it showed up and because I, I give it out to some of my guys and I came back and it sat that on there, I assumed it was coordinated with somebody.
I'm entirely teasing inside joke with the city's economic development director.
Oh.
I'm just glad it's not my name.
My choice would be Don Bean Way.
Yeah, I like that. We'll, we'll do Don Way and then we'll have Bean Way down and we'll have both. It can be on two streets.
For a question on this, this last page here, I'm not sure what this is denoting. Eldon, can you go to the last page in the packet there? Oh. Pretty much that one, then over to the left side of the page. Rickle shaded line there. Left side of the page. Yes.
So we've hashed that because there's been some confusion. That is owned by the city currently.
Okay.
That is a twenty-five for, it's either twenty-five or thirty-five foot wide. It was dedicated in like the eighteen-seventies with an old, old, old plat. And it keeps being brought up that we're not going to our full property line and we're like, no, it's not ours. That's, that is a, currently that is a city right-of-way. So it's, we just wanted to make sure it was designated on the plat showing that that is not us, because it keeps getting brought up that we own that piece.
I believe that was probably the, one of the original roadways. Before there were bridges, they would cross there where the bluffs were low and the river was wide.
Yeah, and then they did that on a lot of those plats. We have the same thing down farther by.
Is that wrong, John? I'm right? I might have been right tonight. I missed a few.
There's a, there's a couple of them throughout the city here that have kind of been left over from.
The other thing that was weird with the plating then is they would plat things that didn't yet exist, but they're trying to put it into existence and so our downtown area has really, really wide roads, even though there wasn't a lot, there weren't houses. There was just really wide roads were platted amongst those farms. But just they're garrulous at both settling and also planning, you know, plating and things. And see, I think that's just a city road. If you want to drive on it.
Yeah, go out there, dude.
Always, it's access to the river. So Adam, this is Commissioner Mitchell. I do, and I think you maybe tried to, you know, Commissioner Anderson's question at the beginning with in regard to the river. Some of those original, uh, depictions during the zone change showed that there was going to be the retainage put in there. Is that still the case or has that gone away?
Yeah, so that's what that gray hatch.
Okay, I was thinking in my mind.
Along the back there, that is.
That is, okay.
Denoting, yeah. That's like a fifty-foot wide. That's the hazard protection that has to be.
Okay, perfect. I had it in my head when it was, we went over the description of the trail.
The, the trail will sit on top of that and it will be the access road, right? Because we have to provide access, we might as well make it the trail.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that that was still the case. I didn't see a section view that showed, showed that. Did I just miss it?
And my apologies, it might have accidentally got erased. I hope not, but.
Question for Thad. In the, in the, I guess the sign-off of the, uh, you know, the, the various, uh, staff reports, in the engineering section, there's mention of a, a potential consideration for an easement. Is that something that should be discussed here?
Can you see that in the?
In the engineer, it's in the engineer comments.
Yeah, the engineer recommended that we add a, or that you add an easement alongside the trail so they can, so the city can if they ever need to.
Right.
Service the trail?
They have to prepare it or, I don't know.
Open space three.
Yeah. What they're looking at, Adam, is this, this is the city's staff scorecard. Um, engineer gave it a green, but you'll see that would the owner be willing to provide an easement for the land between the erosion protection and open space three to the city? So the city could access and maintain the river bottom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't think anybody has any objections to that, Dwayne. You don't have any, you, you wouldn't have any objections to us giving an easement along the riprap protection so they can service it down in there and get into the floodplain if they ever had to?
Yeah, no, it, we need is the final plat. If you, do we need it? We would need the final plat to reflect an easement in the city down in there.
Yeah, we'll have to work out what that looks like.
Tonight, I don't think we need you to have the specific answer.
Okay. We, we'll probably need to discuss with them how far they're talking, because obviously over the riprap, they'll need an easement on that, you know, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how, where exactly he's talking about, but yes, we'll.
Yeah, I, I think the commissioner did a good job of reading his packet and real, realizing that was there and bringing it up. And I think that's the purpose of the commission here is to give you, give you our, your best shot at what the city's asking and what the city knows and so.
Yeah, I get, yeah, I get what he's saying.
Yeah.
So.
The only reason I said. Because it's, it's going to be out in the, out in the open space. It won't affect any lots or anything.
Yeah.
I'm asking about it now is that we kind of need to make it like one of the conditions here, even if we say, hey, it gets worked out before final plat or whatever, it's got to be a condition on.
Work out what that looks like.
On this, that's all.
Yeah, because I think we need to talk to him like how, what are, where is the easement exactly? What is, is he talking about the whole thing or is he just saying we need to get to the river like we, uh, till we? But yeah, I don't think that there's, we can work something out with him.
One to the river. He's just saying along the trail, just so they can work on the trail if they ever need to or basically going to be on, I don't even know how they, it's going to be on top of your ripraps. I don't know how that is going to work.
Yeah, it'll be basically on the riprap, so I don't see that being an issue, but we'll work it out with him.
That trail will, will be dedicated.
Yes, the trail, yes, is dedicated to the city. And I'm sure the riprap has to have some kind of an easement for it, because it's a city, I don't even know. Well, well, yeah, there's a couple of things we've got to work out with that.
Adam, I have another question with one of the conditions here are that that the amenities get built with the twenty-third unit, um, receiving a building permit, which is about roughly twenty-five percent or so. But it also says that, that that the armoring doesn't get built until phase four. And my, I guess my question is, is that that amenity area kind of needs armoring to do it? So how are you going to? How are you going to do that?
I don't know. We'll have to work through that. Whether that needs armoring.
Timing.
Yeah, it's more of a timing thing there on how that works and the armoring kind of swings through there around the amenity area, because originally it was needed through the middle of it, so we kind of swing it around it, but um, I think that's probably more of a function, are these guys willing to risk having their amenities side washed away?
Like if you put all the money, you put your amenities in without any armoring and then all of a sudden you have a flood and.
I get, yeah, I get what you're saying, so, yeah.
So.
Okay, appreciate it.
So I guess that's more for, for you, Dwayne. It, you probably would want to at least put some of your armoring in earlier than phase four? Condition, I just.
Yeah.
Suggestion.
I appreciate it.
Is there any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Um, I already had the public hearing, right? All right, looking for a motion.
Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat. The Stillwater subdivision located approximately Heritage Fields Drive, Ranch Road. Findings and eighteen conditions outlined by staff with an additional condition that easement, a service easement be established along the trail before final plat approval is worked out with, between, with the city.
Commissioner Davis, seconds with, do you want to be, just so that there's no confusion, that the, uh, that nineteenth condition would just say an easement in the land between the erosion protection and the open space three?
Yes, correct.
And Commissioner Davis, did I get you? That was a second. Okay, thank you. So I had a, uh, first by Commissioner Anderson, a second by Commissioner Davis. Individual voting, Anderson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Tupoe?
Aye.
And Commissioner Mitchell, originally I opposed the zone change, but having been given the zone change, I do like the way that you've compiled and put this together, so I am aye as well.
Bonnie, did you get the, uh, the wording of that nineteenth condition? Bonnie, did you get the, uh, the wording of that nineteenth condition?
You know, I will have to go back to the video tomorrow. We're having some other technical issues here tonight, but I will go back to the video and make sure that is documented in the motion.
Okay. It's basically encompassing the, the city engineer's request for a an easement along, you know, along the trail between the, the open space, um, area and the trail. And, and the condition was that the details of that will be worked out with the city before final plat approval.
Okay, I, I got it.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Let's, uh, go back to item four A. Thad, have you had a chance to find or research what you were seeking?
Um, I'll just make note to the, to the IT to re, reauthorize my machine to screenplay, because Eldon's is still, there we go, having its issues. Um, I had confused the subdivision preliminary plat with the conditional use permit on the commercial use codes. And in doing so, I made a bunch of confusion and it wasn't necessary. So I was wrong. Eldon was right, and I do believe that the commission can proceed with that item.
All right. And, okay, and that was not part of the public hearing, so we don't need to worry about that. Do we have any other questions, or? Could first surge for staff, or the-
Just one question. It's one large parcel now. They wanna go to seven. Why seven? Are there, do we have any clue on what they're thinking?
Did I read the, did I read the staff report? Yes, you did. Um, is the applicant still here? Is, are you? Nope. Applicant is gone.
My client is online.
Oh, applicant is online. So Commissioner Davis, maybe you can ask that question?
Yeah, again, just, just to repeat it, this is Commissioner Davis. You, you're looking to break this into, into, you know, seven separate parcels. Can you give us any indication on, on what you're thinking? As far as what this, what you're thinking as far as populating it with?
Yeah, well, it's, it's a, it's a commercial use in the C-three zone, so it, it could be a lot of things, a lot of different uses all within that, um, that particular zone. Um, so I can only speculate as, as far as what could come in there. I mean, intent of a subdivision is, is to subdivide and sell lots. Um, as I'm sure you're aware, this will, um, you know, really at, at heart, that's, that's the intent, is to be able to sell lots. And so we've gone through with the city through this final plat and, and construction drawings in order to get here today. So you'll likely see a, a combination of, and I am speculating, probably some restaurants, fast food, um, retail. I think there's a potential for, uh, maybe a liquor store or something like that. Uh, tho, those are some probable uses that I think, uh, will kinda land in here. But as far as the number seven, part of it's the lay of the land and trying to put lots together that are of decent size to subdivide while still getting a private drive aisle through there. So I don't, I don't know if that helped at all, but, uh, it's kind of an awkward shaped lot, so it was a little bit unique in that regard.
Okay, yeah, so you got a couple larger pieces in the back and then three in the front, and then you go down the side where one and two are, so it's-
Yeah, the, the city looks at this as kinda finishing out the, the commercial area there next to Winco and the interchange. And so, and I, I'm not aware of any specific uses or commitments, but I think you could expect kind of freeway, retail, commercial, whether it could be from a hospitality in, in a hotel to an office building, or as, as, uh, the gentleman mentioned, any of those in between. And so it's, it's gonna be an interesting, you know, it's a commercial project that the city's been, been, been waiting for, hoping for. And so, um, I, I think it's an exciting, exciting progress.
Very good. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant? All right, then we look for a motion.
Commissioner Davis, I'll make a motion to approve the final plat for Buena Vista Commercial Plaza Minor subdivision located at three fifty Buena Vista Boulevard, subject to findings and conditions as detailed in staff report.
Commissioner Toupeau, and I second that.
I have a first by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Toupeau. Individual voting, Anderson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Toupeau?
Aye.
And I, Mitchell, and I aye as well. That concludes the items on our agenda. I look for a motion.
Adjourned.
I second.
I have a first by Commissioner Anderson, a second by Commissioner Toupeau. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
All right. Thank you.